Thanks, Dan. Welcome to the Milford Board of Selectmen meeting, Monday, November 6th, 2017, at 7:00 PM. First order of business is the signing of the warrant.
I would make a motion to approve that.
Yep, I'll second that, all in favor, that's unanimous. Next are the minutes for the regularly scheduled meeting, October 24th.
I would move, Mr. Chairman, we accept those minutes.
And I'll second that, and all in favor, that's unanimous. We also have minutes of an executive session meeting, October 16th, 2017.
I would move, Mr. Chairman, we approve those minutes as well.
And I'll second that, all in favor, that's unanimous. And we also have minutes of an executive session, October 24th.
And I would move that we accept those as well, Mr. Chairman.
Also second that, all in favor, that's unanimous. Next is anyone here for invitation to speak that is not on the agenda? Okay, our first public hearing and scheduled appointment. For Virginia Sardina, represented by Joe Antonellis, for application of a new license and a common victualer, and Joe Antonellis.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Walsh, thank you, thank you for the opportunity tonight. First, as always, I'd like to thank your staff. When you do anything with liquor licenses these days, they have to be specific and exact for the A, B, C, C to approve them. And both Gene and Richard have been, as they usually are, very cooperative in that regard. Gene is very diligent to make sure I do things correctly.
I'm sure.
No, I appreciate that, I do. But I'm here tonight to talk about the opportunity to actually expand the ownership of a present license, which is presently owned solely by Gene Sardina, he's the 100% owner. And if you're aware of what's been going on at 350 East Main Street, there has been some significant and substantial improvements made to the facility there that the Sardina family owns. As you know, at one time, the buffet restaurant was there, they moved out, and at that time, Gene purchased the license to open a facility, and after a couple of years of looking around as the best way to do it, what he's going to do is, he's going to actually open a full-service bar and restaurant in the facility with golf simulators. So you're going to have an opportunity to go out to dinner and play golf at the same time with the most sophisticated golf simulation equipment in the United States. And so it's a fascinating enterprise on their behalf, and in order to do it, he's decided to bring his brother in as a pod owner, and Joe Mora, who is an old family friend, someone that's been with them for quite some time, also is a pod owner. There is another owner on a minority part, and unfortunately, and he's the gentleman that we've picked to be our manager, but he hit a bad case of sciatica and is in bed tonight, so I apologize for him being absent. We're here tonight for three specific things. One is for the application to change the ownership, based on the percentages that I've set forth with the new owners. Secondly is the appointment of the manager to replace Gene as the existing manager. And again, that's unfortunately the gentleman who's not here tonight, that's Michael Hicks. And Mike has a significant amount of experience in both retail and specifically in the golf industry, so he's the perfect person to bring in in that regard, because he's going to be able to monitor that part of it. All of the gentlemen have, I think, and I know they've passed core tests, and I think are suitable for the purposes here in Milford. The other request tonight, the third request, so we have a request for change of ownership, request to appoint Michael Hicks as manager, and thirdly, a request to issue a common victual license. We're about two or three weeks away from a grand opening. I believe the occupancy permit is either issued or is in the process of being issued, so we're really being able to move forward, like to think about having a grand opening in a couple of weeks. And even if the A, B, C, C holds off on their review, Gene is presently the manager, and so we can open up anyway, obviously the license stays intact. So that's just a brief description. We were, as I said, we're going to have a grand opening, but in the interim, if anybody would like to go down and take a look at the facility, you could arrange it either through me, or you could just go down, they're all there all the time, I think they're practicing their golf swings more than they're working. But again, I can tell you from my involvement with the Sardina family, they do everything very, very precisely. The equipment and the facility is all state-of-the-art, brand-new kitchen equipment, it'll be a full-tap system. And again, as I said, everybody went out in advance, took the courses, we have all the TIF certifications for all of the critical employees, and we're right now just in the process of wanting to get going, so with that, I'll stop. If you have any questions, thank you.
No, that's great, and the Sardinas have been great corporate neighbors, so we're lucky to have you in Milford, so we appreciate that. Mike, is there any questions before I go through the department head? Okay. We have a department head review form, handicapped accessible, no change in actual use, no outstanding taxes, the fire department has no concerns, the police chief have no concerns, so I think we can just wish you a lot of luck and see if we can get through these, I think, three separate motions, Mike.
Okay.
If I may, real quick, I just want to be clear that the Sardina family still is going to be involved.
Absolutely, Gene and actually, Gene is transferring a lot of the shares to his brother, and they are the dominant shareholders, so they will be involved on an absolute day-to-day basis, yes. So Stevens jumping in also, I apologize.
Yeah, not only they are first-class family, I've known them probably 25 years or more, everything they do, they do, like you said, they do first class. And you know what, we need to encourage people to keep coming to this town and wanting to open in businesses, so with that, Mr. Chairman?
Right, first, we need Rick, make sure we do this correctly, will you?
First one would be a change of manager, so we want to make a motion for change of manager.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the motion to change the manager at the...
It's hard to say, Genesis.
Yeah, Genesis 19, I think, is what I saw on the sign.
We'll be coming in for doing business ads pretty soon. I apologize.
Well, I'll second that, all in favor, that's unanimous. The second one is to appoint or approve the change of manager to Michael Hicks.
I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
That was the first one.
Oh, that was the first one.
Second one would be a change in the beneficial interest in ownership.
Oh, the beneficial interest, okay, yeah.
I would make a motion that we change the beneficial and...
Beneficial interest.
Interest in ownership.
All right, I'll second that, all in favor, that's unanimous.
And the last one would be for the common victual license.
And I would make a motion for the common victual license.
And I'll second that, and all in favor, that's unanimous. Thank you, Joe.
We thank you very much, appreciate it again, thanks for the cooperation of the staff, all of you, thank you.
Take care, gentlemen, have a good night.
Thank you, have a great night. You're welcome, take care, Gene. Yeah, you too. Take care, Joe.
All right, next is the transfer of a common victual license for Coen Bra Restaurant to Saber Express, Sabore Express? See, I'm already probably butchering it. You can sit right out front, just going to have you folks introduce yourselves if you can, just for the record.
So I am Alfredo, I am here to help her, actually. We work at Corina Restaurant for Brito since last year, so he decided to sell the restaurant to her, and she's going to buy the restaurant, and...
Great, all right.
...changes in that.
All right, well, it looks like, according to the department head review, no change in actual use, no outstanding taxes, and there are no concerns from the fire chief or police chief, and no outstanding tax liens. Mike, do you have any questions?
I don't, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we accept the transfer.
And I'll second that, all in favor, that's unanimous. Have a good night.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Take care. Lot of common victualers tonight, Rick.
Yes, yeah, I guess the season, huh?
All right, next agenda item is for the Big Y, for a common victual license for 7 Medway Road. Are we expecting anyone from them?
We were, I think they were just upstairs, too. Maybe we push that back, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, we'll just move on to, how about New Roman Catering, is anyone here for that? Not yet. Are you here for the bakery?
Yeah.
Yeah, why don't you come on up? And this is, can you pronounce the restaurant for me?
Sabore Amia Reconcito.
Reconcito, okay. All right, if you just introduce yourself and...
Yeah.
What's your name?
My name is Santiago. I'm just coming by a restaurant and...
Okay, so this is a transfer of an existing license?
Yeah.
At 94 Main Street in Milford.
Yep.
It says you're going to be open seven days a week, what are your hours going to be?
It's like 7 to 10.
Rick, but that's all, I'm sure, what was worked out, okay?
Yes.
All right, it's not accessible, but there's no change of actual use, there, according to this, there's outstanding real estate taxes of $2,432, and personal property tax $194.28. Were those paid yet, or?
They have not been paid.
They have not, so...
They come and pay, but I talk to her, and they know their owner.
Okay, because I think what we can do, I think we can approve it as based on the taxes being paid in full prior to you issuing the license, right?
Subject to, correct.
Subject to, Mike, if you're comfortable with that?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we accept the application pending real estate taxes paid in full.
Okay, and I'll second that, and all those in favor, that's unanimous. All right, so get those paid, and then you'll get your license, okay?
Okay.
All right.
I think it becomes more...
Okay, yep. Okay, great, thank you, have a good night, sir.
Good luck.
You here for the Big Y?
Yes.
Come on up. All right, so another common victual license for the Big Y supermarket, it's 7 Medway Road. This is an application for a new license, if you'd just like to introduce yourselves and just let the community know what you folks are doing, it's pretty impressive.
Karen Salt, I'm actually the store director in the store. We're absolutely happy, very happy to be putting in this food service area. We're looking proceeding for 24, so that we don't have to do the CPR choking. Once you go over 24, my understanding is we need to do all of that, so it'd be 24, we are not bussing tables or waiting, or just if they want to be able to sit, you know, get pizza, a grinder, be able to sit and have lunch, so, or breakfast. So we're very excited about the area, and we hope that you'll grant the permit for us.
Great.
And my name is David Murphy, I'm in the operations, under the business for Big Y Sales and Merchandising.
All right, well, thank you for being here. We have a department head review form, building is handicapped accessible, no issues, no change in actual use, no outstanding taxes, and the fire chief and the police chief don't have any objections. Mike, any questions?
I don't, Mr. Chairman, I again would make a motion to accept the common victual license. I think we need to continue to support people like the Big Y that come into our community and want to make a difference, and you're making a big difference, so thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'll second that, all in favor, that's unanimous. Have a good night.
Great, thank you very much.
Take care.
I went to college in Western Mass, I've been eating your food for quite a few years. Well, just want to move to Scotty's here.
Scotty, I would say yes, sir.
Yeah. Gentlemen, now we'll have the Transportation Advisory Committee provide us with an update on the bus route and the ridership. Long time no see. I didn't forget. You just beat me, too.
I see if you're paying attention.
Always.
All right, so you guys know me, obviously, Scott, and this is Brian Long, also on the board.
How are you? Brian, how are you?
I mean, I don't, you know, we'll give you a quick update, what's going on.
That's great.
Not a lot, but we'll start with the ridership. If you get a copy of the total ridership per month throughout the year, you'll see that they're up to about 912 for the month of September, which is a big turnaround from September 16th, it's 501. I just, we see this increasing going forward, just by the trending of the numbers. You know, we're learning, it's a learning, you know, thing for us also, because every month is different depending what's going on, whether it's, you know, holidays, vacations, summertime, wintertime, snowstorms, so it seems to reflect in the numbers every month. But the overall total for one year was 10,044 riders, which to me sounds like a substantial number. Like if I'm on board, it definitely sounds like a substantial number.
I just want to acknowledge, too, just seeing emails and stuff, you've been on the MW RTA to make sure numbers are correct, and I mean, I just really appreciate, I want people to know that, you know, you guys have been doing a lot of work just making sure everything that they provide you is as accurate as possible, so...
Believe it or not, it's been a struggle to get accurate numbers. It took us this long to get to this point, so we do have accurate numbers up to now. Starting in September, we started a new system where they actually send them to us, middle of the month, that's when they have accurate numbers. We were asking for them, you know, beginning of the month, end of the month, and it was very confusing for them, so now we've straightened it all out, it seems to be going okay. So going forward, if it stays that way, we should be good.
Perfect.
The data now will be better, because now we're going to have year-over-year results moving forward, so, you know, like we said, we saw about a 400-person increase from last September to this September, you know, we're looking forward to seeing what the October numbers look like, and hopefully it's a continued increase from there.
Terrific.
I did, I put in a schedule, in the route schedule, I wanted to just point out one thing on here. Reliant Medical, I'm not sure if this reflects the new stop, because this is an updated schedule as of now, but going forward, I don't think this is the right schedule.
No, I don't think that one is.
Yeah, because they are stopping at Reliant already, right?
They are, so... Yes, they are, so Reliant had asked that we have a stop on Fort Worth Boulevard when they move, they have a building going on there. You know, the MW IT took that under advisement, and they've okayed it, and they put it on their schedule starting November 20th.
November 20th, yeah.
That will be the grand opening, that's when they'll change that. I don't know if it's going to have a lot of impact on the time of the route, it may have a few minutes, lengthen a few more minutes, but overall, there should be no major impact on it. But Reliant was pretty adamant about having that stop, so they definitely did it for them.
Yep. Other than that, the Stop and Shop change will probably be the next change in terms of the route. They are going to, the current Stop and Shop location is where the buses meet, the Route 6 and the Route 14, so when it moves to the new former Kmart Plaza, they're going to make that exchange be there instead, so that'll be the next change that comes up, which I believe will be sometime in December, if not January.
Great. Mike, any questions?
A few other little things I just want to give you.
Oh, please.
I just want to talk about ridership some more.
No.
Okay. They gave us what you call schedule tubes, they look like big bullets about this big round, and they're actually going to be put on the poles. And in the thing will be the bus schedule, a map of the route, you can spin it around, it'll be the right height for everybody to see. So they gave us, I want to say 10 of them, a few used ones that don't know if we can use them at this time, but there's a lot of brand-new ones they gave us, too, so you'll see those pop up as soon as the highway department has time to do it, but you'll see those pop up.
What, you're busy?
I have to ask tomorrow. So you will see those, those were given to us, you know, we're waiting for the schedules still, they're going to print the schedules that go inside, and it'll be a neat little thing to have on the poles.
Very cool.
Little more advertisement for us. They gave us a bus shelter, another town had taken it down, didn't want it, it's been sitting at the MW IT in Framingham, and they actually gave it to us. So with the selectmen's permission, I'd like to put that at Town Hall.
Oh, great.
Because this is a stop here, and I think that would be the most logical place, you know, be in the center of town, and I think we'll get the highway department prior to put that in.
When they have time. There's leaves.
Put it on the schedule.
It's pretty convenient, you're the chair of the Transportation Committee.
It works so well. Well, that's the plan for that, so, but that was, it's just like the one we have down on the Sacred Heart parking lot, same exact shelter. That one's actually going to get moved up further.
Okay.
We're not sure where yet, trying to figure that out, because it's in a bad corner, and the MW IT doesn't want it to.
Okay.
All right, so you got the, we did have a printout of the schedule in the town crier, and that was in August. We spent some of that money that was donated to us to do that, I don't know if it really had an impact of any sort, but it was in every paper, so everybody, you know, had it one way or another, so...
Great.
I would like to do that again going forward, whenever the schedule changes, or at least once a year if the schedule doesn't change, but that'll depend on money, obviously.
That's great.
We did a whole multi-language schedule thing, we spread those out throughout the town, but the schedule changed so many times over the past year, we can't keep up with it, to be honest with you. So once we're more settled, we can do that again. And lastly, Joshua Arons, who had approached us to do an Eagle Scout project, what he wants to do is install three benches, three different bus stops.
Awesome.
We had thought about it for a while, and we came up with the high school, Roland Green, and Shaws. Those seem to be the best spots, where there's enough traffic and, you know, it's enough room to actually put them up.
Great.
Some of the other stops will be on private property, want to do that, so we're happy to have him do that, and the Eagle Scouts paid for the whole project, benches and all, and the highway department said they would donate some cement if he needed it, you know, just to help more.
When they have time.
When they have time, yes, I get it. So that's it, that's about it, any questions?
Mike, any questions?
I just, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to the both of you, but I think what's important is that sometimes we get hung up on the ridership more than we do, that the people that are really getting the genuine use out of being able to get to Milford Hospital, being able to get to Dana Faber, being able to get to Reliant, being able to get to Shaws, the Stop and Shop, so whether it's medical, or it's to get groceries to eat, or whatever, and I think that needs to be one of our focuses as well, is not that ridership isn't important, but the people that are using it otherwise wouldn't be able to get to these medical appointments that they need to get to unless they relied on somebody else, and I need to think, I think we need to keep that in the forefront of our mind, and that's also a very important part of this bus route, is allowing people in the town of Milford to be able to get to appointments that they need to get to, so, but thank you again.
Yeah, no, it's, you talk about 10,044 people, that's 10,044 people in either right.
Right.
It's not a small number, it's just not. I know, I know we had high expectations the first year, but, you know, either way, I just think that's, that's...
Did we have higher expectations than that?
I want to say it was 20, 25,000 the first year.
I don't remember, but I just...
I don't know where the numbers came from, but I remember that being thrown around often.
Yeah, I just think that's pretty substantial.
Yeah, I do, too.
And not, you know, in a year, who knows, we could hit that. It's not impossible, that's for sure.
Well, right from the get-go, I mean, we look at the August of 2016, it was only three days that we had people on there, and we had, you know, 20 some-odd people each day in the first couple of days, so, you know, it really has continued to grow, and yeah, you have some days that there's, you know, less ridership or whatnot, but if it's five people that ride it in a given day, and it's 100 people the next day, that's five people that needed that ride to go to their appointments, or whatever it was, to come here to Town Hall to pay their excise, whatever it may be, you know, and so it is an important thing, and we're in agreement, and we actually, as a committee, we're taking it upon ourselves to make sure that we ride the bus once a month, so that we can kind of experience what's going on, just kind of keep an eye on it, do all that as well, which I think is pretty important.
And Brian's been the Guinea pig, so his notes are two, three pages long in one hour, I mean, it's amazing, just keep checking everything, so, but it's good to know all this information, like a typical, like a wheelchair load, you know, we expected that to be 15 minutes, that's what we were told, but what, what do you say, two and a half minutes?
It took four-plus minutes for them to load somebody on, you know...
It's very quick, and it's happening a lot every day, it's more and more, so, it is picking up, so...
I think, I think what's important, too, and I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I mean to cut you off, is that when you, when you've been through what I just went through, and you sit at Dana Faber, and you sit at Milford Hospital, and you see that bus pull up, and you see people that, you know, get off the wheelchair, or get assisted off the bus, you know, come in for treatment, it's important, it's very, very important, you know?
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, it's here, and people are using it, so, you know, I just, I think it's something that is only going to grow and be bigger for us, and help more people, so...
No, and even if you're, when you're presenting to the FinCom or whoever else, there has to be that human component to it, right?
Absolutely.
Because these are, these are real people that are, like you said, if they're on there, they need it, and they're using it, so...
Absolutely, yeah.
All right, well, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you both.
Thank you for all the time you two are putting into this, too, even riding and everything, I mean, that's...
Certainly.
Maybe some morning we should ride it.
I've only been on it once, we should.
Yeah.
We'll make a date.
All right.
Got your Charlie card?
Don't put that in the paper, Kevin. I do have a Charlie card, I have a whole bunch. Take care.
Mr. Chairman, I think representatives from Bill's Pizza are here.
Oh, sure.
Would like to get that...
Nope, that sounds great. We'll go back to New Roman Catering, Doing Business as Bill's Pizza, for a transfer of license. Hi, gentlemen, if you guys want to come up front, you can just introduce yourselves.
I'm Roman.
Hi, Roman.
Hi, Roman, how are you?
Good, how are you guys?
I'm good, good, thank you.
All right, so we're here for common victular, this is a transfer on existing license.
Yes, sir.
Staying in, obviously, the current location, 126 Main, East Main Street?
No, just regular Main Street.
Okay. Pre-existing, non-conforming, not handicapped accessible, but no change of actual use, there's no outstanding taxes, the fire department and police department have no issues, and there's no outstanding tax liens. So it looks like everything's in order, if you just want to give us a little bit of what you folks are doing, are you transferring it?
There's a gentleman here.
Okay, great, and when will you start, within a time of this transfer, or are you ready to go, and?
I'm just ready to go.
Okay, I didn't know if the business was even going to be closed for a day or not, or you're just going to keep...
No, 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 no.
Good, because a lot of people in Milford rely on that.
I know.
I still see the line out on Fridays. Mike, do you have any questions?
I have a question, actually, for the town administrator. Not being handicapped accessible, they're allowed to...
Yeah, based upon the length of time they've been here, yeah, that is fine.
So they kind of almost grandfathered it in, okay, so that's fine?
Yes.
And I would make a motion that we accept the transfer of the license.
All right, I'll second that, all in favor, and that's unanimous. Cool, have a good night, congratulations, good luck. All right, Rick, next is the printer management contract?
Yes, I'm going to have our IT manager come up, Director. Andrew. I guess I'll introduce it, but the technical aspects, we'll leave to Andy, if that's okay. Basically, the finance director, Andy and myself, began to discuss maybe consolidating printer management copier. We then started to interview companies who provided proposals to us for a print management system. After analyzing the ones that we did look at, we feel New England Copy Specialist Inc. is the proposal we would like to go with. The goals are to increase efficiency, consolidate single-purpose devices to lower costs over time. Going to include a number of buildings, Town Hall, Youth Center, Senior Center, Highway Department, and there will be plans to incorporate the library, they're on existing copier lease right now, and we want to gain them. As we looked around all the buildings, there were just so many different printers, so many different scanners, so many different copiers, so we thought uniformity and consolidation would be the way to go. We also have met with each department head to review the proposal, because what will happen is a number of the current printers and copiers will be basically taken offline. So we still wanted to make sure each department could do what they need to do, the tax collector can print tax bills, the treasurer can print checks, so certain of the copiers will stay, NECs will manage those for us and provide maintenance. We're basically going to pay one fee, a little over $1,000 a month, it'll be paid from the IT 155 budget. The finance director then will cost allocate with each department, so it's pretty clear, I think, to us that over time, costs will go down, service will be better. The contract includes all maintenance and all toner-type cartridges and things of that type. We will pay a fraction of a penny for the black and white copy, and I think about five cents for a color copy. for a, a color copy, uh, the software that Andy can talk about better than I can, though, will, basically, if I go in and use it, the system will say that I used it, printed so many copies, whether it be color, black and white, um, so we, we think it's the way to go, we think it's the timely thing to do, we have, uh, new machines coming, both the Town Hall, Senior Center, uh, Youth Center will finally get a, a real good, solid machine, uh, and Senior Center also, I believe, so, um, basically, we were hoping that the Board will agree with, or accepting the NECs proposal, and going forward with this printer management system, and entering into a contract.
Okay.
Uh, again, the technical aspects, I'll, I'll leave to Andy.
Okay. Anything else to add, Andy?
No, I, I think, uh, Rick there is.
I think he covered a lot.
Pretty much gave a good, good, good.
I learned a lot from you.
Of what this is, stuff going, you know, too far into the, you know, whole technical side.
No, that's cool, even when I went through it earlier, I never even saw a contract like this, where you actually, everything's included in the, just in the bound of your printing.
Yeah, pretty much a lot of places, this is what they're going towards, uh, everything included, uh, on a technical standpoint, ours is not like the largest in the whole world here, so, trying to service printers, and trying to maintain them and stuff, can become a pain.
Yep.
And it's best just to get that to someone that knows what they're doing, and that's what they do, and they do it all the time, and having a print management system, and, and also having the, the one contract umbrella, everything in town is, is going to save us some money.
Well, it sounds like a good idea to me, Mike, any questions?
Just a question to Andy, do, do they have a branch on Beaver Street?
They, it's funny that you mention that, um, they do have a similar logo, that used to be Northeast.
Correct.
This is New England Copyer.
Okay, so, so then, the Woburn address is their main?
Yes, that's their main headquarters, and they, they do have a nice warehouse up there, which they keep a couple million dollars worth of parts and replacements, so, it's not like we have to wait around forever to have something, uh.
They do have technicians, I believe, in, in the area, I too believe.
Within four hours, they'll come out and troubleshoot, or.
That's a response time?
Yes.
Great.
The ability to have the equipment ready to go also would prevent a lot of downtime, should one of the machines need to be replaced.
Yes, absolutely.
Which would be done under the contract.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion we accept that, I mean, I would personally leave it up to our RT Director.
Yep.
That's your responsibility.
Absolutely, as soon as we'll get there, we'll coordinate with, um, all the department heads.
What I know about a copier is you hit the button.
Yeah, some of the cool things with this, that it would also, just to give a brief highlight, um, is that it'll tie in with our own system here, so that you can use your own account, so we'll know who is printing what, how many copies, even if you press print, you go to the machine, and you would have to release it, so, a lot of people forget, hey, I got sidetracked, and I printed out like a 50-page document, a lot of times that gets chucked into the gra, into the garbage, and maybe you lost 50 sheets of paper, so at least this will help, uh, alleviate that, manage that, and without wasting a lot of paper and toner and stuff.
Well, I'll second that, and all those in favor, and that's unanimous.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Andy.
Bye, Mary.
All right, that's all the public hearings and scheduled appointments, now, Rick, the Town Administrator's report?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman, um, I'm happy to report, the repairs have now been completed for the gas main at Town Hall, Eversource has replaced the gas line, they did place, if you do look at it, three bollards now that will protect the main, um, from a future-type incident, uh, similar to the one that we had, as I mentioned prior, we also repaired the brick portion of the building, replaced tiles inside, also, we had a plumber go out and complete the needed repairs inside, um, I just want to thank Joe Zakili, the Plumbing Inspector, and Carlos Benjamin, the Facilities Director, for their hard work and oversight on this project, um, I do want to next report that Fire Chief Tui attended the Massachusetts All Hazards Emergency Preparedness Conference, if this was a two-day conference presented by the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, and this was two days last week, uh, he informed me that it was very informative, and topics included cybersecurity, National Weather Service, basic sheltering concepts, and a workshop for all hazards preparedness, so I thank him for attending that, um, I do want to update the Board on our hazard mitigation plan, we did have our third working group meeting on October 3rd, uh, with our consultant, GZA, uh, departments represented with the police, fire, engineer, planner, highway surveyor, and a representative for the water company, and myself, the actual plan is now about 95% complete, we've scheduled the second and required final public hearing and working session for Thursday, November 9th, at 12:30 here in Room 3, at that point, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, will then review the plan, and will then be presented to the Selectmen for review and approval, as the Board, I'm sure, well knows, and remembers, FEMA did approve an award grant to the town of almost $33,000 to be used to update, uh, our multi-hazard mitigation plan, and then, uh, three items from State Representative Murray's office, he has informed me that Mass DOT has scheduled two public information hearings to allow residents, commuters, and other stakeholders to become acquainted with the current stage of this project, again, it's the I-495, I-90 interchange improvement project, the hearings are on November 15th at 7:00 PM at the Hopkinton Middle School, that's on 88 Hayden Row in Hopkinton, and the second one is on November 16th at the Westbro Town Hall, which is 34 West Main Street in Westbro, uh, Representative Murray's office also informed us that the town, informed the town that the governor has signed the Milford Liquor License Bill for the approval of the all-alcoholic beverages pouring license for the property located at 198 East Main Street, that's the site of the former, uh, Truffles Restaurant, and finally, uh, the, his office informed me that the House has engrossed the special legislation proposing to ensure that the Town Administrator and Finance Director positions be members-at-large at Town Meeting, it will now move to the Senate for hearing, and I will follow, follow up with Senator Fatman's office regarding that bill, uh, and that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you, Rick, Mike, any questions, Rick?
I have any questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. All right, moving to old business, we had, uh, we have a vacancy on the Zoning Board of Appeals, um, as well as a couple of vacancies on the Industrial Development Commission, I'm going to ask that Rick, uh, push those off and reschedule them, if you're okay with that, Mike, as well, for the next meeting, it's been a, more of a longstanding tradition, which I, uh, I didn't pay too much attention to when I, when we, uh, planned the agenda, uh, we try to have a full board when we're making appointments, unless it's time-sensitive, I did reach out to Chairman of the ZBA, Dave Consigli, and he, he said that as long as we can get it done at our next meeting, he should be okay, because he's got some things coming before the Board.
He does.
That was the only one I was worried about, I know the IDC can wait a few days, but,
uh. That's fine.
But as long as Dave's comfortable, then I figured we could, we can move, move it to the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
And then, Rick, and, back to you, for the ADA Transition Plan contract?
Yes, as, as the Board knows, we, um, have as one of our best practices, the development of an ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan, uh, we are now ready to proceed with the plan, uh, I have looked into a number of, um, architects, engineers, planning companies, and we have, uh, agreed to go with, depending the Board's approval, the Center for Living and Working, Inc., uh, to perform our ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan, I have met with, uh, representatives from the school, representatives from the Park Department, uh, because they are going to be involved, uh, in the preparation of the plan, um, with the town, um, the services, uh, included in the plan that's before you will include individual meetings with department heads, and then they will go toward the plan, they will do facility site assessments, and they will complete a, a draft transition plan, now, this will include 12 municipal buildings, five schools, and 11 recreational sites, facilities, et cetera, we thought to leave the parks out did not make a lot of sense, it'd be nice to see what we could do at Town Park, at Fino Field, at Plains Park, at Draper Park, um, rather than just the municipal buildings, so we are going to include all of them, I have, again, met with them individually, and I've also met with representatives from the school and the park, collectively, they have reviewed the agreement that's before the Board, they are in agreement with it, uh, the total cost is around $58,000, as this Board knows, we did receive a grant of $3,000, the school is going to also contribute to their portion, um, of the, uh, plan, there will be public meetings, there will be a chance for this Board to obviously review it as it is being, uh, developed, uh, it will take several months, uh, it's a tremendous undertaking, uh, it is something we should do, it is something we must do, and it's something we need to do, so we want to make sure we do it, um, right, at that point, once the plan is developed, then we would be looking to two things, one, there are grant opportunities out there to complete projects, um, the second thing, uh, would be, we try to do some of the projects, maybe within budget, some of the smaller ones might be very, painting of lines, or signs, or, or numerous other things that maybe can be done within budget, and I guess there's a third thing, obviously, I think we'll have to integrate and incorporate some of these items on our capital plan, um, again, we're, we're not looking to do everything in a year, this is going to be, uh, over a period of years to implement our plan, and the plan will change, uh, so obviously, this Board thought it was very important to make it a best practice, uh, I think the schools and the parks also believe, uh, it is extremely important, so, I would ask the Board's vote to go forward with the contract that is in front of you, so that we can really start, uh, developing this ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan.
Great, Mike, any questions or concerns?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, Rick, just a question, and I, 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 by no means mean to put you on the spot, so the contract is, is $58,850, correct?
Correct.
You said that we're going to receive a grant for $30,000.
Uh, yes.
Do you know roughly what the school's contribution is?
Yeah, the school's contribution, I believe, is about, let's see, actually, it's $19,250, yes.
Okay.
And, uh, your question is, where's the rest of the money coming from, right?
Well, my other question is, is, um, does the Parks Department contribute at all?
I don't know that they're going to be able to, we do have, though, some, um, CDBG monies that were, um, secured from, uh, grants that were given to various property owners, and money recaptured by recapture agreements, so that little balance that's left, that's where we'll be taking this, I've consulted with the Finance Director on this, and that is something we are able to do, so we're not looking for really any, uh, new money.
Okay.
Um, uh, so that's how we're going to pay for the entire project, and that's why we don't have to wait for, uh, a special Town Meeting, or a Town Meeting, or anything like that.
Okay, and you would recommend that we move forward?
Absolutely, I think, uh, I really want to get going, I think this is an important project.
Okay, I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, yeah, my only question was, um, regarding the schools as well, about just them budgeting for this.
You're right.
Yeah, they indicated that they're all in.
Because I didn't know if they knew, they knew this was coming or not, or prepared for it.
Oh, no, I've met with Rob Quinn, Kathy Perry, uh, talked with them a number of times, we've met with them, they've actually met the consultant, and, and the company that we're going to use, as has Mike Brishani from the Parks Department, Jen Walsh is on our team, uh, former Selectman DeBattolo May is on our team, uh, so I think we have a good cast of people, I'm also going to bring in our Building Commissioner, uh, obviously, Matt Markcott, he's going to be working with us as we develop the plan, so, and try to implement the plan.
Okay, great. So, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we accept the contract for Center for Living and Working Incorporated.
And I'll second that, all in favor, and that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Thank you, nice job.
Thank you.
Uh, Mike, do you have any old business?
I don't, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Rick, I have one, uh, one item, um, I know, we, I think we talked about it at a meeting some ti, it was some time ago, I think, with all the changes in the Inspection Office, it probably fell through the cracks, and then I haven't brought it up again, but, uh, so that's my fault, but, uh, a constituent did give me a call, um, across some Depot Street Tavern, um, obviously off of Depot Street, uh, next to the ambulance company, we sat way back.
Yeah.
The neighbors are still complaining about a building over there with the roof collapsing.
We have looked, no, we have looked at that building, we are aware of that building.
Okay, I think we, I think we talked about it some time ago, so maybe you've stayed on.
Yes, no, we, I have photos of that, Erica Robinson, our Assistant Sony Inspector, has been out, if it's the same building, and I'm pretty sure it is, by your description, and we will be reaching out to the owner, to see if there's a remedial plan, or, and then a long-range plan, so we are well aware of that, and we will be, I hope to be able to report to the Board next meeting on that.
All right, that's great, huh?
Yeah.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
All right, now, for new business, Depot Street Tavern is looking for a one-day license, and that is for all alcoholic beverages, on November 19th, from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM, a private family party.
Mr. Chairman, again, in, in support of, uh, businesses in the town of Milford, I would recommend that we grant this license to them for one-day liquor license.
All right, I'll second that, all in favor, that's unanimous, next, we have an invitation to bid for the on-call mechanical and facility, uh, representative for the Milford Water System, Rick, this is obviously part of.
Yes, this is.
Our whole, our, our whole process of, of moving forward with hopefully ownership of the water company.
Yeah, this would be sealed bids, and we'd be looking for a company or company to do emergency, as well as non-emergency repair service, and on-call mechanical and facilities repair, so that pipe that breaks, you know, 2:00 AM, we need someone to be able to respond,
Absolutely.
uh, very quickly and immediately, and to handle the problem, so it'll include labor materials, equipment, tools, um, again, both emergency, non-emergency, on-call services, obviously, the water commissioners went, will be consulted, so, um, once the water commissioners are formally appointed, uh, they will work hand-in-hand with this company as to the repairs, and whenever they can, obviously, written work orders will be put in place, uh, we have an estimated annual value of the contract, about $200,000, but again, that's very hard to judge, uh, given, especially where we are now, and then where we're going, so.
Okay.
Uh, but this is something that is, obviously, is very much needed, and the thought with the team, uh, water company team, was to, um, get this out to bid as quickly as we could, to get this in place, so that when the new water, uh, manager is, is put in place, then he or she would be able to, uh, reach out to whoever is selected for the bidding process, so this is something we think we need to get, uh, going as soon as we can.
And what is the timetable, I mean, you think it could be, the bid could, the invitation could hit the streets in the next couple of weeks, or?
As far as putting the bid, yes, I would hope to, we'd like to put this, uh, probably central register and the other bidding requirements under, uh, I think this is a 3039M process, uh, within the next couple of weeks, probably, though, we will need to give responders, um, months.
Absolutely, I would think so.
To respond, because they're going to have to look at the facility, look at what we have, et cetera, um, so, yes, but the, the thought process with the team, Town Council and, and others, was to get this moving.
Okay, great, Mike, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, Rick, just a, a question, these are repairs that would not be able to be handled by the current water company employees?
Absolutely, yeah, the contract itself provides that no water company employees will be handling these types of things, this is the, remember the major break they had within the last year and a half, that kind of situation, correct?
So they, they, they don't have the, lack of a better word, the talent to be?
Uh, it may not be talent, it may be person, you know, personnel, and, and what have you, a number of personnel, equipment, yeah, because this, this contractor will have to provide equipment, materials, tools, whatever's needed, to handle whatever that situation is, correct?
And this is a, kind of a seven-day-a-week, 24-hour-a-day?
It is 24-hour, seven-day-a-week, correct, on-call.
And, and I don't mean disrespect anybody at the water company, when I use the word talent.
Oh, no, 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 right, right.
Saying is that, you know, so, okay, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we accept this contract.
All right, I'll second that, all in favor, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick, for that, another big step.
Yeah.
Next is a request for a one-day lis, uh, license from Sacred Heart Parish, for a paint night fundraiser for the parish hall, and that is on November 8th, in the Bell Tower Room, from 6:00 to 10:00 PM, and that's, uh, wine only.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we accept that application for a one-day license for Sacred Heart.
I'll second that, all in favor, and that's unanimous, uh, the Metro West Regional Transit Authority, uh, representative, uh, Rick, what, what has been the history?
The history is that the, obviously, the chairman is, uh, the designee, which would be yourself, but you can't appoint someone to act, uh, for you, uh, so if you couldn't make a meeting, uh, someone else could go, um, to the meeting.
All right, I know I'm attending a meeting, and I think, uh, to my calendar, I think, maybe a week or two?
Yes, I believe you are, yeah.
Um, so maybe we can put this off to the next meeting, and if we see if anyone's interested, or if you have a recommendation, Rick?
Sure.
Um, I know, because Harold Rhodes did it.
Yeah, I don't know.
Been passed, and now he's on a board, so, is that what this is a result of, in the signing?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Okay.
We have to designate every year anyway, but yes.
Oh, you do, okay.
Yes, this is, every year, this is required.
Okay, great.
The chairman's changed, so this is done every year.
All right, perfect, all right, yeah, we can do that on the 16th as well.
Sure.
All right, next order is acceptance of a gift from the Historical Commission, the amount of $50, uh, from the Sanborn family, Dear Ann and Lynn, thank you so much for sharing with us your love for history and incredible knowledge of Milford's origins, and especially with us your love for history and incredible knowledge of Milford's origins and especially its quarries. Sincerely, Marty and Gary Sanborn. That's, uh, that's very nice. We have a motion to accept.
I would accept, make a motion to accept the, uh, gift, Mr. Chairman, to the Historical Society.
Right. And I'll second that. All in favor? That's unanimous. Next is acceptance of a gift for the Milford Fire Department, the amount of $100. And this is from the New England Center for Children at 33 Turnpike Road in South Florham for supplies and equipment.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we accept the acceptance, the gift for the Milford Water.
And I'll second that. All in favor? That's unanimous. Next, we have the Milford Performing Arts Center requesting a one-day, uh, wine and malt license for December 1st and 2nd, from 6:30 to 10:30 PM. This, I believe, is the, yeah, the IMPAX annual fundraiser.
Yes.
This has been done before?
Yeah, it's actually a great, uh, a, a great event.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we accept.
All right. I'll second that. All in favor? That's unanimous. And do you have any new business, Mike?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Rick, I have a, something I'd like to look into.
Sure.
Um, something I'm not familiar with at all, but I thought it was a worthy question. I've had a couple of, uh, folks, um, that are, well, I guess they're elected officials in town on boards and commissions. And it was asked, and maybe we can find out, and I don't know if we bring in the insurance commission, if we could support a, a, them buying into our health insurance, but at 100% level?
Oh.
So, they could get, they could, they could benefit, which I think is a pretty interesting argument, uh, one I certainly never thought of, that if any of our appointed elected officials want to get the, the rate that the town as a whole pays because of the pool